Call a meeting to order. We'll start off with citizens' comments, are there any? Not seeing any. We'll go to our student presentation.
Great, good evening.
Good evening.
Yes, thanks for coming out tonight. We'd like to take this moment to give our school board a huge thank you for the creative opportunity that you all funded to have No Strings Marionette Company come to school and create some amazing puppets with our students. Each student in every grade made a sock or rod sponge puppet. The puppets were made in the timeframe of two weeks. We met in the art room either between three to four times to design and create a themed puppet that went along with a common core standard, art standard, or a classroom standard. Having your support and funding these kinds of artists and residents really make learning fun here at Shasberry, so thank you for that. Providing learning opportunities I myself couldn't do on my own, along with the support of helping our teachers. Barbara, Mimi, and Dan from No Strings Marionette were a pleasure to work with and a lot of fun, and I think the students had a good time, right?
Yeah.
And they actually will be returning here on Friday, January 12th, to perform their own puppet show called Handsome and Gretel. So we're looking forward to that, and that is being sponsored by our PTO. So let's give our school board a big puppet thank you. We'll stand up. This is Ellie, Tiana, James, and Holden, and they're gonna show you their puppet with a puppet wave. If you want to give them a high five or a puppet handshake, so let's just stand up and see if we can say thank you. We'll go right in front of the camera, wave to the camera. And we'll come back right here. And so this is just a small portion of puppets that were made. We're looking at like 200, Jeff, how many students? We have 207.
207 right now.
207 puppets were made. So I'm gonna show you a short little video of some photographs, and also at the end of the presentation, you'll see where we came together as a whole school to have a show and share puppet and also a puppet parade.
Everybody in the room knows this person, but not everybody on TV may know. This is Ellie Unflit, our wonderful art teacher.
Oh, hi, I'm Emily Unflit, art teacher. Sorry.
She's the one that facilitated all of this with the No Strings Marionette, so this is all on her credit, so we'll all thank her for that.
Well, thank you. A lot of support from all of you. All right. So that is a couple of photographs of all us joining in into the gym and having a show and share, where all the students were able to see all the puppets that were being made, because they weren't able to experience that when they were making their own puppets in the art room. They weren't able to see all the puppets that were made. So it was a great opportunity for them all to see that. So now I'm gonna share with you a couple of videos. All right, so that is us getting ready for the puppet parade, which was from the gym to the hallway outside where family and friends could come and see the puppets, because they weren't able to see them all as well. So here is our puppet parade. Ready? So kindergarten's made self-portraits of themselves, and that is what Ellie has. Ellie, hold up your puppet. Here comes first grade, and they made sock animal puppets. Second grade's coming in now, and they made ton life. And they are rod puppets. Okay, and third graders made fairy tale puppets. Those are books. That's a gingerbread man. And then we have... Our last part is the upper grades. Fourth graders, they did animals to go along with their Native American myth. And tooth bakers made explorers. With bigger sponge heads. And then our sixth graders did Chinese-themed dragons, or empress, or emerys. Or pandas. And you can see, it was nicely attended. It was a little brisk day, but it was, the sun was shining. So again, on behalf of the students here and myself, thank you for supporting the arts and our students here and your creative way of learning. So thank you very much. What do we say in a puppet way?
Forgot my name.
Thank you!
Thank you!
Thank you.
So thank you so much.
Okay, well, I think we're gonna have a change in the agenda.
I did not make a puppet this year.
Mr. Johnson made a puppet.
He didn't make one, he was a busy man.
Next year, I'll come and make one.
We're gonna have to move up the principal's report to now, and after that, we'll have the superintendent's report, and then we'll go on to the ventilation.
So I asked Ed to move the principal's report up, because we have, I defer most of my time to Vic Maloney in a second, but I want to make one big thank you to Mrs. Green and the band and chorus. They did their concert, their winter concert, last Monday night on the fourth. Very well attended, the band did a wonderful job. Did two performances, one for the school in the afternoon and another one for the parents and families in the evening. And as usual, Ms. Green had them ready to go, and they sounded wonderful, one of the best concerts we've had. So I want to thank Ms. Green for all her hard work with those kiddos for that. And as I said, I've been saying this for a couple of months, Vic Maloney is our new safety and security coordinator in the district. He's been working with all the schools, our safety team here at Shasberry as well, around our procedures around safety and security, ideas that he has about improving safety and security around the school. And so he asked to come to one of our meetings before budget seasons to talk about a couple of recommendations that he has and I have with him about how we can improve safety and security around the school. So Vic, I'm gonna defer to you. If you need me to chime in, let me know, but you're the expert here, so I'm gonna rely on you for your input.
Thank you, it's my pleasure to be here with all of you this evening. As Jeff mentioned, it was my charge from Superintendent Calkin to develop emergency operation plans for all of the schools within the district by September 1st of this year. And certainly we met that goal, and I spent many hours with Jeff and the safety team here at Shasberry Elementary, designing and developing the emergency operation plan that we'd like to see in place for Shasberry Elementary. As part of that plan, one of the first things we did is a safety assessment of the building. And we really focused on three different areas. We looked at the telephone network, we looked at the entry system, and we looked at cameras. And so I want to report to you our findings and what some of the recommendations that came out of that safety assessment of the building. First, concentrating on the telephone networks, I'm sure that you're aware of the fact that there are some issues with the current telephone network. One of the biggest issues that I understand can't be solved by all of the telephone and IT professionals is the fact that in the wintertime, once the temperature drops below 20 degrees, the ability to receive incoming calls is impaired. And we don't know why that's the case, and nobody's been able to come up with what the cause of that is, but that's certainly a concern of ours. Another concern I had is that there isn't a telephone in each classroom. And today, the recommendation is that certainly that be the case should an emergency arise in a classroom. So having said that, you do have the ability with an external intercom system to announce any type of emergency, if it be a stage three evacuation, a clear the halls, or a lockdown. You certainly have the ability to do that, but we are concerned about the telephone system. I know that this has brought to your attention before. I know that we are pursuing and investigating, perhaps trying to replace that. There obviously is a grant in place that you're all aware of through 911 compliance, and hopefully we would meet the criteria to receive funding through that grant, which would certainly supplement any money that the Shasberry District would have to appropriate. So that's where we stand, as far as I know, on the telephone system. But again, I think it behooves us to really move forward as quickly as we can to rectify a telephone system that is antiquated and not really functioning the way we'd like to see it function in certainly any type of emergency situation. The next area we looked at was the entryway. We certainly, with the air phone now that is in place, with the receptionist involved in screening and monitoring entering, we think that system is good. We're gonna be district-wide offering a training in the next few months to all personnel in the district who are responsible for monitoring, assessing visitor access and entry into our buildings. So again, with your system in place and with that training, I feel very comfortable with being able to, be able to control entry into the building. The third area that we looked at is cameras. And again, in most of our school buildings, we do have cameras, exterior and interior. As you know, Shasberry at this time doesn't have any cameras. I think we would certainly recommend you considering an exterior camera system. I think the reason for that being that certainly these are all digital cameras now, it's all computer access. This would allow us to be able to surveil the building during school hours and take notice of any type of suspicious activity that's occurring in and around the building. And obviously, even after school hours, certainly if there was to be some sort of a legal entry into the school, certainly with the ability to archive information, we would be able to go to that archive file and be able to retrieve camera footage that might relate to that criminal activity. So again, we're certainly urging you to look at the installation of an exterior camera system. I've been out here with one of the IT specialists with Jeff. We did walk around the building, we did pinpoint areas where we'd like to install the cameras. Renee has information now as to the pricing of the cameras and certainly can give you some idea of what we should be looking at for appropriation. So as far as the building safety, it's the telephones and the cameras that we're really recommending and urging you to consider as we move forward in the budget season. As far as the emergency operation plan itself, we certainly have a plan in place that we all feel very comfortable with. As I said, this is, I don't take sole responsibility for the development and design of this plan. It certainly was in collaboration with Jeff and the entire safety committee for us to develop the plan. We have what's called a stage two and stage three site. The stage two site is the Shasberry fire station. This would be where we would move if we had to move out of the building for an extended period of time. If the period of time is even beyond that or even more extensive, we would move to the stage three location, which is the Shasberry Methodist Church. I've met with the pastor at the Shasberry Methodist Church. I have a signed memorandum of understanding that's been signed by our superintendent as well as the Shasberry minister. And as far as the Shasberry fire department, I met with the Shasberry Board of Selectment. They signed that memorandum of understanding, again, with the superintendent from the district. So again, we have that plan in place. We certainly have protocol now for clear the halls, for lockdown, of stage one is a fire drill, and certainly the stage two and stage three that I just mentioned. We certainly looked at all types of threats and hazards that we feel were either medium or high priority or risk in Shasberry Elementary School, and we addressed each of those with a protocol as to how we would want the incident command to react should that incident occur. We act under what's called the Incident Command System. Jeff is the incident commander. Again, there are other roles that other people, other staff members play within the institution, and that's all been defined as far as a stage three evacuation, what their roles would be. So if you have any questions or concerns, I'd be happy to answer them. Certainly, I'm available at any time if any of you would like any further discussion on anything, or if you have any concerns that relate to safety or security. I'd be happy to meet with you at any time and discuss those. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to entertain those.
Anybody have any questions? How many cameras you're talking about?
I think we're talking about approximately 10.
Okay.
And again, this is our estimate. Again, once we decide on a vendor, we have the vendor come out, we would collaborate with that vendor to make sure that we cover all of the areas that we'd like to see covered on a perimeter camera system.
And the phone system, what are we looking at there?
Phone system, I think Jeff had an estimate of $40,000, am I correct?
I think it was 44 that we had the estimate from, and that's basically a phone in every classroom.
Okay, this is the same thing when we went through with the state police knowledge, that we had talked about that a year or two ago?
We talked a little bit about the phones in the state police, but it's become more and more of an issue since then. And I think it's become more of an issue, 911 having a phone, I think 911's requesting that, or requiring we have a phone in every room now. Where we went to state police, it wasn't.
And there's grant money for that, or no?
We applied, remember, we applied for...
That's right.
We won't know till, I think, March.
Right, that's right.
And we're putting money in the budget to match the half in case we get that grant.
Okay.
Is there any protocol or standards as far, and I'm sure there probably isn't, but as far as mobile or cellphone coverage in a place, in a school, in a school, or for a school, an area where a school is? One of the things that's always bothered me about this spot is that there's no cell service when you're inside this building whatsoever. And I think if there was, God forbid, an emergency...
It's not a requirement under the 911 compliance. Again, the cellphone towers really are the property of the various vendors, whether it be Verizon, whether it be any of the other vendors that provide services in the area. So again, we can't mandate anybody to install more towers to give us coverage. That's gonna be up to them. And again, it really is based on how many subscribers they have in an area as to how many towers they erect.
Yeah, I thought there was some, some things from the state as far as getting coverage in critical areas. Money's for getting coverage in critical areas, and I wasn't sure whether you were...
There might be some granting in that regard, nothing I'm familiar with at this point.
I would tell you, Scott, that the grant we applied for, one of the questions they asked me after we applied, actually was they asked how the cellphone coverage was in our area of the school.
The only thing I would say that would favor us getting the grant, that we could indicate that our cellphone coverage is spotty.
Yeah.
Non-existent.
We have some spots, quarter of my office up here.
But as soon as there was people hidden here the other night, it all went away.
Yeah, so it's a complete dead zone for all intents and purposes.
Yeah.
The 20-degree problem that you mentioned, so this is a problem that is a known problem and we've had it.
Yeah, it's not, it's not every time it goes below 20. We just noticed that when it gets really cold, or some days when people, we finally, people finally get ahold of us, or they call Central, they say, "We've been trying to call Shasberry, we can't get through."
And what happened, it just rings, or?
Does not, it rings for the person calling.
Right, yeah.
We don't get any indication on our end that somebody's trying to call us. And it's usually short-lived, and usually our tech person can go and he resets the system, and it fixes it. But it's been a problem the last two winters.
So we, and then, at present, we don't have classroom telephones?
We have...
Where there are in some classrooms, but...
Two, there's two classrooms that have phones in them. In the nurse's office, in my office, in the main office.
But most of them don't have that.
Yeah, no.
On the subject of cameras, this was something that we talked about two or three budget seasons ago, maybe twice, actually, we talked about it, I'm not sure. And I have some concerns about the, just the need to, the expense and the actual need to have them, to spend that money. So I wonder if you can just elaborate, Vic, a little bit more on the, you know, what safety concerns and what security concerns do you think that we have right now that, you know, for someone like me who's not entirely convinced, you know, we should be taking more seriously?
I think what we want to be able to do is, the way it would work, this would be, it's all digital now, so it would be through the computer, we wouldn't have those analog monitors that we used to have. And what it would enable somebody to do is to be able to surveil the entire perimeter of the building. And again, we know that we've had some suspicious persons around various buildings, not only within our school district, but neighboring school districts and nationwide, and we want to be able to be on top of that. We want to be able to identify something we deem as being suspicious during school hours. The other issue is, we're very fortunate in Shasberry and in Vermont in general, as far as illegal intrusions into these schools after hours. Obviously, there are other school districts that are not that fortunate, and they have an issue with that. I'm hoping we never have an issue, but in any other case, I think it behooves us to be prepared should that event occur. And again, should there be any criminal activity like unlawful or legal entry, we'd be able to archive that from the archive ability of the system and be able to assist law enforcement in apprehending those perpetrators. So I guess for those two reasons, that I'd ask you to consider moving in that direction.
During school hours, would we need somebody, would a staff person be monitoring the screen? In order to make it effective, would we need to have somebody essentially monitoring the screen throughout the day?
So what happens at the other schools that have them? Camera is usually at the secretary's desk, it's a split screen, there's multiple cameras on that screen, it's going through a loop. So I would say that, the proposal wouldn't be to hire somebody that you have monitoring cameras full-time, but the more important thing, if they see something, they can respond to it, but it's also being archived. So if an incident happens, then they can go in and operate the system and bring up what's there.
Right, okay. I think we talked about having two monitors, one on our secretary's desk or area, and one in my area.
Yep.
Thank you.
The other thing I just wanted to bring up is that we have, just so that people know, we have discussed the telephone system in the budget system. So we're trying to, as long as everything works out all right, it should be in the budget if the grant goes through. Anybody got anything else for Vic? I'll speak in defense of cameras. When we built the new middle school, you know, everybody balked at, "Well, you're gonna have cameras here, that's, you know, invasion of privacy." I don't think so. And we had caught some students that night driving their cars, digging up the lawn and everything, and so they ended up having to pay to fix that, so that's a good thing. If that's all we have, then that's a good thing. But I mean, it does show if somebody's gonna do damage to the buildings or property or anything, it's, I think it's a good thing. I don't know if we need exactly 10, but maybe four or five, but, you know, in the right places. But there's always some options there, you know, anyway. On the camera type thing, how much would be the recurring cost each year approximately would be for?
It depends if you count, if you go with an entire exterior, Mr. Kenny just said maybe we'd do five this year, maybe then we'd do another five next year. Then you can make a decision, do you want any interior cameras to monitor the corridors? I mean, so this could be a phase, and these are all digital now, so we can add to the system and enhance the system as we go along. But again, I think, I think we do need that exterior coverage, and depending on how many cameras we go, we can say, "Well, we want to have more coverage," and we can do it in phases.
So we say we'd have five cameras out there, approximately, how much would that cost us each year to run those?
There is no, there is no, once you have the system, there really is no recurring cost. It's not, we're not soliciting a vendor to give us services, we're purchasing it, we have the system, it's ours.
We've had schools experience like one camera will fail, it's, you might have to replace the camera, but...
Like anything else.
Right, yeah. Or you might need a new monitor, or you might have to upgrade the computer for how much, because of how much you're storing on it, but there isn't anything mechanical that sort of works out. Where, where's... of works out, wears out.
Anything else for Vic? Thank you, Vic.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Jeff, you have anything else?
That's all I have.
Okay. Jim, you got something?
Thank you. A couple of things I wanted to discuss with you. Let me pass. So at, at recent MAU budget meeting, Rene brought up a slide showing an increase in the SVSU budget for paraprofessionals, which prompted some questions, I think Mr. Durfee was one to question that. So the next day in my office, I had a visit from the HR director, the HR manager, and Rene, telling me that Mr. Durfee was right when he said, I know nothing about this, I hadn't heard about it. What happened in negotiations?
Thank you.
Pass on another page to you. Actually, on May twenty-third, these are the minutes from May twenty-third, negotiation sets. I'll let y'all get that. So under ESP proposal, article one, number two ESP, you'll see minutes, number two ESP, ESP proposal review, article one recognition, the ESP, that's the educational support personnel, and the board agree that all paraprofessionals or employees of a local district should become employees of the SVSU. And the procedure whereby this could be done is to lay off and then hire all the employees on the same day. So this was evidently discussed in negotiations, I was not present, I didn't take over the ESP negotiations till after the HR director had an accident and left, and that's when I started going today. So here's the dilemma you face, that we talked to our attorney, so the negotiating team knew about this, the, the, for both labor and management. Whether that got back to all boards and whether you voted on it, one thing I know it didn't, you all got a little summary sheet when we had completed negotiations, and on that summary sheet was not, that was not there. So in discussions with our attorney, the solution is this memorandum of agreement that both sides would sign. Because the, the case could be made, it wasn't voted on. If you, as board members, weren't aware that that was agreed upon in negotiations, then the package that you were voting on wasn't complete. So you have a couple of options. You can vote to agree to this memorandum of agreement, and you were the first board that I'm bringing this to. And then I will bring it to the other boards. If you vote it down, because you're the first one to do it, then I won't bring it to the other boards, because you know how negotiations work, it has to be unanimous, all boards have to agree to it. So Dina Atwood wrote this, our attorney, one of our attorneys who handled the negotiations for the support staff contract. From discussions with HR and finance, it, it really doesn't make much difference to us from a management point of view, because if they all become SU employees, and for you, that's two people, we're talking two people in your building. If they become all SU employees, the SU is just going to bill back to this committee anyways, just like we do special ed, so it'd be internal transfer. Rene will have to rework the, the SU budget to take the, the increase in the SU budget and put it back in all the individual board budgets, but that certainly can happen, so.
That was, that was something you were already, when you showed us the budgets the other day, you had already been doing that, right?
The paras, yeah, the paras are out.
Yeah.
And put it in the SU assessment.
Yeah, and that's what brought it up at the, at the SU budget meeting, as Rene explained, and why did you see an increase in the SU budget meetings, because of what you just said, that those paras ended up in the budget. And then at that meeting, Dave said, I don't remember that being discussed, and that's prompted our investigation that brought this forward.
It just makes for a funny-looking budget for a year.
Yeah. But there are some, I mean, it becomes a consolidation, I think, I don't want to speak for Dave, but one of his points was, they no longer become your employees, they're SU employees. So what could happen with that? Just like what happens with special ed employees in the SU, they could be transferred from building to building. Unlikely that would happen, but they're not your two building-based support staff personnel, if a need arose in Pownell, or there was an opening in Pownell, and for some reason they wanted to go there, they could be transferred there. It was, when I went back and looked at the discussion that took place at that meeting, that was the intent, you had a couple of members, and Fran, you were there that night, I believe Leon Johnson and Jackie Prue were big advocates for making it all, that gives flexibility for moving employees.
How, in what way is that communicated to those employees? I mean-
So they, they voted on it. You know, they, they already approved and ratified the contract that had that in it, is my understanding. So they, so how it'll be communicated, which is really their association's issue, they have to sign this agreement too. So even if you vote to do it tonight, then I have to take it through every board, and then the association has to vote, and I would assume that they would communicate with their members the same as I'm communicating with you. So it'll, it'll be a lengthy process before this is all signed off on.
Is it possible, though, that the association had already discussed this with its members and-
That would be my assumption, but I, I don't-
They may not need to-
Yeah, they did it in their closed session, so, you know, we, they only gave us the results of the election of, to ratify the contract, but not what they discussed with their member, but I believe this was our error to our members, but not to, so I, I really can't speak to what they told their members.
Just the question is, you brought up, now they're SVSU employees and there's the possibility, although maybe unlikely, of them moving. With SVSU paras now, their special ed paras, it's Wendy Pierce recommendation-
Mm-hmm.
-who moves employees around. With this case, with these general ed, what's I call them, these general ed paras, who would make the decision?
I would say that would be among the principals and the superintendent, you know, because those are details that still remain to be worked out.
Yeah, okay, I haven't discussed that, okay.
No, no, it was just, when I go back and read the minutes of negotiations, I can't speak to what the intent was, but other than, this is something that's been discussed for a long time, for years, about consolidating. But as far as the mechanics of how that would be-
Details I've worked on.
Yeah, it'd be, and the seniority list would be maintained, would change then too, that would, because there'd be-
They added, they'd be added into the-
There'd be one seniority list, yeah.
But they wouldn't lose any seniority or anything?
They wouldn't lose it, no.
Is there a, is it an equal amount? If it's a ten thousand dollar position that's transferred out, is it a ten thousand dollar position-
Yes.
-that's billed back to us, or is there some sort of cost savings to the?
No, there's no, it's really, from a financial point of view, it doesn't make any difference. It's not like the, the SU takes a cut of, or, for overhead or anything like that, no.
So my, yeah, my reaction when I saw it first was, aside from being surprised because it hadn't been discussed, was, oh, this takes away some control that we have to staff a position, and somebody pointed out right away, well, we just had a vote about that, the Act forty-six vote, was essentially, was this board, you know, majority of this board, and the townspeople saying, yeah, that's what we want to do. So as a pre, in other words, sort of as a preview of what things might look like, that's one way to consider this. And then I guess, you know, the other thought was, was this done intentionally? And you said you, you're not aware what the intent was, Jim, but was the intent to simplify things from a health insurance contract standpoint, so that everybody would be an SU employee and we wouldn't have to-
No, I don't, I, I don't think it has anything to do with health insurance, it has more to do with like seniority list and transferring employees-
Yeah, okay.
-filling vacancies. I know from speaking to Leon, who was the chair of that committee, that this was something that he was really in favor with. And Fran, I don't know if you can end, do you recall anything more from that night of the twenty-third?
Yeah, no, I, the only thing I can attest to is that this has been talked about for probably four or five years. And it's, it makes it easier if there's, if they, we have a position here that we don't need anymore, and instead of laying that person off, if there's another position in another district, whether it be Pownell or North Bennington, whatever the thing is, they still have a job and you don't lay that person off. So I mean, that's, it's, I think it's a win-win for those people, myself, so I believe that's why we, and, and they had talked about that, they don't have a problem with that, so, and.
My, my question is, legally, since the year has already started, and you've probably paid these people already through the SU, is, is legally-
No, no, we haven't, because we have, we're not, we're still paying them through you. Yeah, so that part did not happen, because, as you said, a lot of us wasn't what we, a lot of us, finance, HR, were not aware that this had been agreed to in negotiations.
So you're still, you're still being, they're still being paid for out of Shasbury?
They're still your employees, because that part was not agreed to.
So basically, this agreement would start next year?
Well, we would, yeah, because that, because they're the budget, they're in your budget for this year, so, let me see if, if-
July first of eighteen.
Yep.
July first of eighteen.
Eighteen.
So this, this won't come into effect until next July?
No. Because the budgets are already set.
Right. But the other, the other paras are being paid out in-
Yeah, because even if it was agreed to last, this was discussed in May, so even if it was agreed to and you signed off on it, when you signed everything else that was agreed to in the contract changes, it still would have been July, because this year's budget was already set and operating, it would have been next, July of eighteen.
Okay. So was, was the, was this agreement or this, this understanding incorporated in the contract?
No, that's why it's a-
Oh, it's not even in the contract?
That's why it's a, that's why it's a memorandum that-
Okay.
Which we've done that before, with, like, particularly on health insurance, not opening the whole contract, and just signing a memorandum, because the minutes show that we had agreed to do this.
Well, and maybe there's more discussion, but if-
I, I gotta see if anybody has any more discussion. Any other discussion? Well, we guess we're gonna make a motion.
Yeah, I would say-
We gotta make a motion and have more discussion.
Let's, I, I would move that we accept the-
Memorandum of agreement.
Memorandum, yeah.
A second, a second.
And authorize your chair to sign it.
And authorize the chair to sign it.
And any other comments? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Okay. So let's carry on. So you have me to sign again?
So, thank you. And thank you for understanding what was also a surprise to me, when Dave brought it up, and then the, like I said, the next day, I had three staff members in my office saying, Jim, we have a problem.
You want, you want this one back?
Yes, did you sign it?
Yep.
Okay. And what I'm hearing out now is, the first sample, one of the goals that I set for the superintendent's office for the SU this year was creating data dashboards for employees, so that we can have a snapshot of our employees on a month-by-month basis. This is not something I will be sharing with you unless requested, it won't become part of my monthly report, because it more is a personnel matter. But here is a snapshot of the first three months of Shasbury Elementary School, mainly around attendance, how days are used. And the superintendent, what I do is, I try to look for patents. Nobody is going to develop a patent in three months, so that's the caution that I want to talk about.
Everybody's what?
No one should say that we're developing a patent in only three months, patent.
Pattern.
Pattern. Say.
General?
Okay.
Little bit of an accent there. So let me show you a couple of things. First, you look at the bar graph down there, and you can see what average attendance was, this is for personnel, not students. September, October, look what happens in November, absenteeism goes up. Now, if it was anything like the November that I've had with Michael, there's no surprise at three months into school that absenteeism goes up. So what are some things that a superintendent does look at? Well, look, go up, the box up above, you see September, you had fifteen point five sick days. Then you see Monday and Friday, so forty percent of all sick days happened on a Monday or Friday. Seventy-five percent of all personal days happened on a Monday or Friday. Go to October, seventy-seven percent of all personal days on a Monday or Friday, fifty-six percent of all sick days happened on Monday or Friday. So you're saying like, whoa, it looks like a patent's developing. Well, then go to November, zero percent of all sick, of personal days happened on Monday or Friday. So again, three months is not enough of a snapshot to tell me anything, it's going to have to run on a whole year. I will meet with the principal, I will, we, you've seen how we've used data in our curriculum instruction and driving that. We want to use data on how we look at patents developing in our school. We can look at, we can also take this out pers, you know, further, wouldn't share that with the school board, to look at specific personnel now with this, where I could then have a meeting with the principal and say, hey, you have a staff member, do you know that they've used fifteen sick days and they've all been on Friday? Maybe we should have a discussion with that person. So this is one, a project that I said we'd do, just wanted to, I'm sharing it with the boards, so see that it is rolling out, we've been doing it for three months with some great assistance from HR. You know, I basically tell them what I want to see in reports and they put it together for me, so I'm not going to sit here and take credit for it, other than asking for it to be done and make sure that it is done.
Am I, why am I, why am I seeing that the number in September was thirty-nine point five, but then down below it's twenty-two point five? Number in October is thirty-four point two five, but then down below it's twenty-six?
Because the, the chart below doesn't have release days, which would be like for professional turn, that, those are, they're actually working that day in professional development, or professional learning. I'm glad you mentioned that, because I've heard from, you know, some board member, we're pulling our teachers out of class for too much professional learning, and it's a problem with subs and all that. We'll be able to, to look at that better, because that, you'll see, you know, release day, there was fifteen in the month of September, well, that's probably because there was those days without any students in the building, and then you'll see that there, there was hardly any in October, and there was a-
Three.
Three in November. So it's not what I, it's not what would concern me as superintendent, saying, why are we bringing too many subs in and students are missing good first instruction because their teacher's being trained, and I, of course, I would argue, well, that is how you get good first instruction, is by giving professional learning to teachers. So, and we'll continue to, to play with this as the year goes out, we could all, because things that we can manipulate, we can break out FMLA, you see that FMLA leave and jury duty agreement all got broken into one, because that's not something that we really are concerned about from a tracking point of view, we really are looking more at like, personal day use and sick day use, and looking to see if there's patents of abuse that may develop, and then use that as a management tool too, for corrective action. And that's all I have to share with you tonight.
Okay. Any more questions for Jim?
Excuse me, are the principal and the superintendent staying for the rest of the meeting? You moved things up, I wasn't sure if that was because you had to leave.
I, I'm-
I just asked Vic to go, so he didn't have to stay.
So he didn't have to stay.
And normally I would be leaving, because there's, I go to the North Bennington meeting, and I could pretend that I have to go there, but they canceled their meeting, so.
We'd find out.
Probably would.
Okay, let's go to ventilation, project update. Jeff?
So there's light at the end of the tunnel, we have a ceiling in the older wing, the duct work is complete, all the duct work into the classrooms, the grates all complete, they're here. Snow day was beneficial for them, yesterday they were here today, yesterday finishing up, putting the grates in the classroom. There's just some minor low voltage wiring, they need to do some of the controls, and then the system, my understanding is they're going to test it, and then it should be up and running before Christmas break, so next week and a half, it should be going. I know Renee has an update within the packet of the project costs up to date at this point, I think it's the second update in the packet. Do you have any questions? If you have any questions for me as far as the progress of the work, I can speak to that, but it's, like I said, it's end stages at this point, and then Renee can answer any questions on the funding of it so far.
Is this, is this gonna be the final bill, or is there gonna be more?
That is a summary of total cost at this point, so it's the full contract, but I think we're probably gonna see another change order for the ceiling tile, because I think they had to be replaced. They weren't just putting ones that were there back, they actually had to be upgraded for fire code.
Yeah, we had a hint on that, it was gonna happen.
So that hasn't come through yet.
Okay.
Do we, is the lighting functioning in there now on the ceiling?
Yep, yep, the lighting's functioning.
So it's just about finished?
Yes.
Anybody else got any questions for Jeff? That's good, I wanna thank everybody that sort of struggled through that after we found the asbestos.
I wanna thank the Shaftesbury community for, for being patient with the work throughout the fall and getting it done with the ceiling being open, but-
Okay, let's see, we'll go to the action items, treacherous report. Move, do you have a second? Have a second? Discussion? Any other discussion? All those in favor of it?
Aye.
Aye. I don't know if we have to do that, but, okay. Budget status report? Anybody have any questions on that? Set tuition rate for official nineteen. That is, comes out, that comes out of-
Yeah, so I, in not looking at the calendar, I probably should have said discuss, so by statute, we're required to let any sending school districts know if we're going to be increasing the tuition. So, you actually will, if we stay on schedule, you will have another meeting, regular meeting before January fifteenth, but I was just, you know, had my hat on, oh my gosh, we're gonna miss a couple of other school districts that need to do this as well. You know, we've had our first pass, you know, at, at budget, you know, still some variables that we're discussing, but for the most part, it looks like it's gonna be relatively constant or flat. So currently, you're charging eleven thousand five hundred per student, that's tuitioning into Shaftesbury. You have four students this year, and one of them is a sixth grader, so we'll be matriculating up to them at the school next year. I don't, I think you did mention, maybe at our budget meeting, Jeff, that there's a potential of a couple-
Yeah.
-other ones coming in. But we can, we can discuss it now, if you feel like it's, it's not an appropriate rate, or we can table it until we're a little bit further along in the budget process, I just wanted to make sure that it's, you know, on the radar for everybody, that we have to make sure we do it, if it's gonna increase, that we notify the other boards before January fifteenth.
I think we have to learn more before we can-
Yeah, we can, we can sort of table it, we should go out until-
But the, but our hands are sort of tied, right? We can't, we can't just arbitrarily raise it.
No, well, we, we will, we're actually required to submit a report to the state as well, on, on the announced tuition, so it is, it's, it's budget-driven. So we'll come up with our, you know, estimate of where we are at that point in time, and submit that to the state. We take out transportation, we take out special education, so there's a formula that we have to follow that gets us to, you know, what we feel that number is. Some boards choose not to charge that much, but you, you know, charge much lower, but you just can't have a blank check.
Right, but we can't decide, wow, we're, we're looking at a big bump in the tax rate, we need to go to fifteen thousand, that's-
It would have to be warranted by the budget.
By the budget, yeah, which it won't be, probably. But we can table this at least until we have one more meeting or one more regular meeting.
Yeah, because I think your next meeting is the tenth, I think. That's what's on the agenda.
Next meeting is tenth, January tenth.
So, I just got a little, got a little anxious and got it on here, maybe earlier than I needed to be.
It doesn't make any difference, because we're gonna, you wanna set the rate?
Do you have a recommendation for the rate, Renee?
Just at our, our first pass at, at the budget, again, it looks relatively steady, so I mean, eleven-five has, has been the rate it has been, so I, I wouldn't see a reason to decrease it for, for sure, and I would expect that when we do our analysis, it's probably gonna come out pretty close to that anyway.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there's gonna be that much of a difference.
No, I don't, I don't think so.
Would it help for the budget planning process if the board set a rate tonight, or would it not impact you if they wait till January tenth?
It's not gonna, we have a revenue line that we carry, so we're anticipating three students at this point right now on the revenue side, unless we get better, better-
So that won't make much of a difference in revenue? If you went, if you changed it by a hundred dollars, it wouldn't, yeah, okay. So then, I recommend, set it tonight, yeah. If we're looking like, it could be a three hundred dollar difference over it?
Yeah, it's up to-
Yeah, the only, the only reason that I can think of, and I may not be seeing this entirely clearly, but if the, if we can justify increasing it, even if it's only by five hundred dollars or three hundred dollars, then that would mean a lower, a slightly lower tax rate, I mean incrementally.
And then we can definitely talk about it, you know, at, at the next meeting, because we will be further along in the budget process and have some numbers probably locked in a little bit more than we do at this point.
That doesn't put you at any disadvantage in-
Nope, it's just that, a matter of time, and I just have, have to make sure that if we are adjusting it, that we get notices out to the other boards, so.
So what are you suggesting as a-
I'm sug, I'm suggesting waiting then, till the next meeting, but, yeah, not strongly suggesting that.
I suggest we make the tuition at twelve thousand then. Eleven seven, pay takers?
We'll, we'll have a better idea though, if-
That's fine.
If we're a little bit further along, so.
Okay, so-
So I'm sorry, I'm gonna be a little premature on that.
Okay, so we'll table that, to make sure we get that in next month's-
So it's gotta be on the January one, for sure.
Yeah, January for sure. Donation approval, Ken Carlson?
So for the past several years, Ken Carlson has come here, Ken Carlson's a former geology teacher at high school, longtime geology teacher at high school. He's been coming here and doing geology lessons with our fourth grade, and part of that day he comes, he also has a rock and mineral sale in our lobby for the kids during lunch and then after school when the parents come. And every year, he donates part of that money that he makes during that sale back to the school's activity fund, and this year it was three hundred and two dollars that he's donating back, so I'm just looking for board approval to, to accept that and to put into our school activity fund.
I'll move it. Second. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Jeff, what was the amount again?
Three hundred and two.
Three hundred and two.
Yep.
Can we send him a thank you note, would that happen?
Did.
Did.
Consent agenda. Have a motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
And motion is second, discussion. Hearing any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 So carried. Policies. We have three policies, immunization, superintendent evaluation, and emergency closing. You wanna take them all at once?
That was, I, I was, that was the meeting, I was at the meeting on Monday, but the one, two meetings ago, I was not there, and that's when most of the discussion happened on this, but we did talk about it briefly, and they're all relatively minor adjustments.
Minor changes, if it looks like.
Minor changes.
I have the superintendent evaluation, policy twenty-six hundred. One, there's minor changes, as you say, and I think it's all designed to make it a little less mandated by the calendar, but one, one question I had, and Jim, you can weigh in here if you want, but on the, under timetables, the first letter A at the August meeting, the board will review and so forth, I wondered if, if there, it would be beneficial to have that date not be fixed at the August meeting? Being, being summer, and, and maybe that's not the best time to require this to happen.
So I'm trying to think in the actual, did it happen in Sep, might have actually happened.
It happened in, not in September, right?
Yeah.
Not in August this year.
Yeah.
So, so is that something that, for time, timeline-wise, do we need to have, do we need to make sure we have a meeting in August to, if nothing else, do this to meet other timelines, or is it something that we can adjust?
No, I think that, right now, it's actually not happening in August necessarily.
Right.
So, and I think it's okay, that it doesn't happen in August in practice, but if we're fixing, if we're updating the policy, it would be a good time to either say, all right, doesn't really happen in August, let's change that, or, or maybe there's more going on here than maybe it really should be August, but, just a question to bring back to the policy committee.
Or could, could it be worded the first meeting of the school year?
Yeah, or by the, by the September meeting, maybe.
By the September meeting as opposed to the word August, yeah.
By the end of September.
Anybody else have any questions? Or anything else? Okay, so what's my pleasure?
So I would still move to warn it, and then, yeah, if you, you know, if, if other, if the committee agrees, then you'll have to change it, but-
I can send a note to the, to the rest of the committee, right?
Yeah. Because it wouldn't be a substantial change, as you said.
Or, or we could just, you know, table that one and pass the other two and bring that back to the committee.
It would go back to the committee then.
Yeah.
But you have, you have to adopt it later on anyway, so that change should be in there.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna change it, that's why I was figuring that we should just, you know, pass, if we don't have any questions on the other two, pass immunization and emergency, and then just table that one until, with, with that note to go back to the committee.
Yep, and I'll send a note to let them know that it's coming.
Okay, what's our-
It's all move, five, policy five, one, one, zero, immunization, and policy three, two, zero, zero, emergency closings, to-
Acceptance.
Accept as changed, as modified.
No.
A warning.
To warn, rather, yeah.
Those are warned. What do you have on yours, Dave? I got eleven hundred immunization, you had five one-
Five one one oh.
Five one one oh.
Yep.
And the actual copy of the policy says five one one oh.
Okay. Okay, we have a, we have a motion, do I have a second for that?
Second.
Second it. Okay, discussion? All those in favor of warning five one one oh and three two zero zero?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Three, okay. So passed. And now, wanna make a mo, wanna make a motion to just table that one, with, with the change going to the, change going to the committee?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You got that, Scott?
Yep.
Okay. So that'll be- Let's see what everybody else likes about that. Here, give me those, Dave. Okay. Now, I, I put in discussion on the Act forty-six, Section nine proposal. We have to put something in to the state before the end of the month, and I haven't got anything, the only thing I got was from the SVSU meeting, and that was from Jackie, it wasn't even from the SVSU committee. And I, when the SVSU meeting, I asked to get something out, and I haven't seen anything.
So we completed, you have a couple of options. Now that Woodford has won for a revote on January ninth, you could wait to see what happens on that vote, that, because if it was a positive vote, affirmative vote for merger, then you wouldn't have to file a Section nine. But what Donna Russo Savage from the Agency Education said to me, that if the vote failed, then you have a very short window, you basically have to turn around and give that report, you know, immediately. So, we do have, the SU has a draft of what could be a response that I could send to you by email, that you could decide whether you wanna submit that or not. We took the Section nine report from the AOE website and drafted a response, it basically refers to the articles of agreement that you've already worked on, saying that this is what you worked on, because you're supposed to show that you met with other districts, which you did through this joint committee and all that, so. And your meeting is January tenth, right? So, the vote is the ninth. I'm not telling you what to do, I'm, I'm giving you that that could be an option. How about if I send the, I can email the draft of what the administration worked on, which really was completed yesterday, so I can send that all, I'll send that to all, all of you, and then if you wanna send it before the twenty-sixth, do they have a budget meeting before, again in this month?
Yep.
So, we could, we want that as a full meeting, you know, and you could vote on it then, and then submit it.
It could be in a distant, okay, so you could get it to everybody?
Yeah, I'll email it to all of you tomorrow.
And then, and then our budget meeting next week, we'll just put in a, a, agenda-
Yep.
Agenda change.
Right, and you can say, no, we don't like what you put together for us, and we'll wanna do our own thing back then.
Yep.
Or yes, go ahead, and then we'll submit it.
Yeah, so you're going to-
I'll email that to all of you tomorrow.
Are you gonna tell Karen to put an adjustment in?
Yes.
But if this, if this vote in Woodford is a, is a, passes, is an affirmative vote, does that change, does this limit what, what our abilities are then?
No, it won't, it, it won't limit your abilities, because this, even if the vote passes, it's gonna generate even more questions, because there's questions about what will happen with the incentives, because you missed the-
Cut-off date.
The, the cutoff date, but we're getting indications from the legislature that there could be legislative action to, if this vote is paused, to, to give those incentives, you know?
Shaftesbury passed it.
Right. So say the incentives aren't there, then Shaftesbury and Bennington, that both passed it, may want to then decide whether they wanna revote, because say the incentives are completely off the table, what Shaftesbury and Bennington voted is very different than what would happen, because the incentives wouldn't be there. So it gets complicated, so it may not end on January ninth. If, if it doesn't pass on January ninth, then it's over and everybody's gotta send in Section nine. If it passes, then we have to, there's disagreement in the AOE about whether the incentives are in play, our attorney feels that AOE has the authority to say that they are, but that's never gonna carry any weight, really, it's gonna take the legislature to say, and we are getting indication that they believe that we have met the intent, if that vote is positive, we have met the intent of it, so it should be, it was never designed to harm anybody. So, I, I can't give you a definitive answer, other than we'll, we'll keep looking at it, and yes, it will not, or no, it will not harm you if we submit it by that deadline, because you've already merged. The secretary won't review them then.
I think, I think it'd be better off if we submitted them.
Yeah.
You know, and then at least it's showing we're, we're trying to do what it is.
So I'll FOI with you what we prepared, and you can decide whether you want to adopt that as yours at the next meeting we send, at least then you've met the deadline.
Yep. So we'll have that at our budget meeting, and we'll have an addition, addition to the agenda for the budget meeting. Okay, so you're gonna get everybody, all the- So you're gonna get everybody, all of you?
Yep, we'll get that done.
Facilities.
So aren't you glad I stayed and didn't go to North Bennington? We wouldn't have had that discussion.
I would, I would've brought that up before you left.
That's why I asked, actually.
That's right. Okay, you got anything for facilities?
No.
Anything for personnel?
No.
Principal's done?
Yeah.
Talked enough? Okay, anybody got anything else they wanna say?
Sure.
No, I've, I've, I've said enough, I said.
Oh, you have said enough.
Yes. Okay, and I was down to other. And do we all have anything else, just for information? Student enrollment, December? And internal finance controls? Next regular meeting is on January tenth, but we're having our budget meeting, I think it's Monday, is it? Eighteen?
Yes.
Can I ask about that, Dr.?
I've got meetings every day, so.
Can I ask Renee about that or Jim, the internal financial controls? We don't, we, we saw something that might have been the same thing in an SU meeting. Is that right?
Yeah, so by statute, the SU board.
Not our board.
Has to review it and then the, the chair signs it and then it just has to be distributed to the other boards.
Got it, thank you.
All right, and we're gonna cancel the executive session?
Because we discussed it in open session, that was the. There was really no need for an executive session to discuss it since negotiations was, were held in public.
Okay. How about, wanna say something else, Ren?
Motion to adjourn.
Yes. You have a second?
Second.
Second we got. Favor, then we're outta here.